Well, good afternoon everyone and welcome to the village council meeting for Monday, April 21st, 2025. This is a regular village council meeting. Julie, if you could call the roll.
Yes, Stokes.
I'm here.
House.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Also President Village Manager Johnny Burns and Solicitor Amy Blankenship.
All right, thank you for that everyone. And the chair will entertain a motion to excuse Gavin DeVore Leonard and Carmen Brown for excused absences today.
Can we separate those motions?
Understood. I will entertain a motion to excuse Gavin DeVore Leonard for being absent.
Second.
So, I asked for...
Oh, chair, yeah.
Say yes.
So moved.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so then my second is already lodged, yes.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, hearing none, that motion has passed. I will also entertain a motion to excuse Carmen Brown for her absence. A motion and a second for that, please.
Removed.
And I want a second. All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Uh, nay.
Okay, all right, good enough. Two to one, that motion has passed. Thank you very much. All righty, we are to the point now where the chair will also entertain a motion at this time to head into executive session to discuss the potential sale of real estate according to Ohio Revise Code Section 121-22.
It's so moved.
Second.
All right, should we do a voice vote?
Yes, you all, you must do a roll call. Stokes?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. That motion has passed. We are in executive session as of 5:17.
Later attained the position of Assistant Fire Chief with Miami Township Fire and Rescue, and trained scores of future medics and firefighters. He served the village and township for over twenty-seven years as a paramedic and firefighter. At this point, I would ask that we would just pause for a moment of silence to remember Chief Powell.
Thank you for that. Our condolences go out to Denny's family, friends, colleagues, and loved ones. I will open the dais at this point as well if any other colleagues want to say anything about Chief Powell.
Yeah, I actually did want to say, you know, I really appreciated Denny's engagement in the community. I know that Johnny, Terry, and Denny like often met to talk about the three elected entities and, you know, how we could move forward things in a productive way. Super sad, and yeah, I think it just, you know, all of us should have some grace for, you know, folks that have challenges, so.
All right, thank you, Brian. Trish?
Feel terrible for his family and his friends.
Thank you for that. Great, great, appreciate that. Yeah, I would just say one last thing. I think my first interaction with Denny was as a spinning instructor at the Antioch Wellness. I was afraid to go to Denny's classes because Denny will wear you out. So I actually scheduled around his classes.
Unless Karen like got you there.
Yeah, Karen and Denny were like bookends. They were, yeah, yeah, Beast One and Beast Two. We love it. But we're gonna miss Denny and again, do our condolences to everyone with whom he had relationships. So thank you again for those comments and those words. All righty, we are at the consent agenda. This is where.
Actually.
I'm sorry.
Just a few other announcements.
Oh, I'm sorry, please, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. So I did want to highlight, if no one's noticed, it's banners galore these days. So, big thanks to the team for getting the Earth Day banners on both sides of the village, as well as the graduate banners. Looks great. One of the things that was brought up to me recently as an alternative to hanging flyer baskets was the art banners that we used to do back in the day. And Johnny, maybe only you and I remember that. I mean, you know, Judy, of course, remembers it, but I mean, that was, you know, Susan Gartner's thing. But someone mentioned that to me recently as like a great way to bring people into the village and those people that also want to spend money. We've talked about Earth Day a couple of times, but I just want to highlight, it's coming up this Sunday, so it's gonna be really great. It's gonna be at the new site of the Senior Center. So that's Limestone and North College, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., lots of activities, corn drinkers, of course. The Environmental Commission is gonna have a booth that's gonna highlight some of the things that we're thinking about around watersheds and sustainable development and that sort of thing. So, oh, and if anyone wants free marigold seeds, we'll be handing those out. I also wanted to mention two things that happened recently. Last Saturday, Kate Anderson was recognized with a mayoral proclamation for all the many things that she does, but this was at the beloved Community Free Lunch, third Saturdays. So, wanted to recognize Kate. And also Peggy Erskine was recognized at the recent Antioch School Celebration and all the things that she did, established that along with the Community Children's Center. So, spring cleanup, we're gonna talk about later. Summer sewer adjustment, we're gonna talk about later. Wanted to highlight that the Yellow Springs Tree Committee is hoping that folks will come out on May 1st, right? At 6:30? Is that sound right, Johnny? Yeah, May 1st. 6:30 along Corey Street to water plants and do a variety of things. And I think that's gonna be really cool. Wanted to mention that this weekend and next weekend, our own Ben Gunther, as well as Riley Dixon, who's not here, are gonna be doing the works. So, Yellow Springs Theater Company. So, definitely encourage people to go out and like get a few laughs. And if you didn't see that in the paper, there was a really nice picture of the crew. And the last thing I was gonna mention is, if you didn't get a chance to see the Music Man this past week, my gosh, it was, I mean, I'm a big musical person, but I just will say, our youth, their singing abilities, Joe Franny up there, like, you know, leading the women's auxiliary dance and whatever. It was a lot of fun. And just a reminder that it's great that we have the Foundry Theater, that we're gonna have the new theater space coming up with our schools. And yeah, it was just a really neat weekend for that, so.
Nice. All right, cool, great, great. Well, Brian, thank you for that. And I will say for those who, regarding Earth Day, or those of you who subscribe or otherwise get the newspaper, there was an insert in last week's newspaper with lots of information regarding activities for Earth Day. So once again, Brian, thank you for that. Now, we're at consent agenda, where we have a couple of, three items. We have the minutes of our last regular meeting. We have the minutes for our special meeting that was last week. And we have the credit card statement for March. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April 7th regular meeting.
Moved.
Second?
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is passed. I will also entertain a motion for the minutes of our special budgeting session. I will accept, please, a motion in a second.
So moved.
I will second unless you.
I just wanted to make a brief comment, but I, just only to say that.
So it's been moved and seconded, now we just.
Yeah, I'll second. And that the brief comment was that there was a small update to the discussion around inclusionary zoning. And I just wanted to highlight that basically, you know, where we came out of that discussion is that, you know, future, looking at that makes sense. And so I appreciated the clarification around what Meg and the rest of us talked about, so.
Absolutely. And I have been corrected. I may have said that that was on April 11th, a budget meeting. It was a goals meeting. We discussed village goals, and you'll hear more about that later in the meeting. And thank you, Brian, for that highlight. That being said, all those in favor of approving the minutes from April 11th, 2025, special goals meeting? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is passed. Lastly, the credit card statement for the month of March. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Second?
We did have some conversation about this a little while ago. I think all of our questions maybe have been addressed. All those in favor of approving that credit card statement, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is passed. Now, we're at the review of the agenda. This is the opportunity where we review the agenda. And take a look and see if there's any items on the agenda, maybe that ought to be reconsidered, or if there's any things that's not currently on the agenda that we might want to add. Do we have anything for agenda review? All right, we will follow the agenda as published. Brian, if you don't mind, reading petitions and communications.
Oh, of course, I appreciate it.
I only have the list. I wasn't prepared to say anything more than what's actually listed here. So if you wanna do that for us, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, well, as Kevin already highlighted, we've got two pages of Earth Day flyers, and those highlight the activities that are happening this Sunday, as well as things that are, have already started. But there'll be things on Earth Day itself on Tuesday. And actually, on Tuesday, if anyone wants to help plant the Mayor's Monarch Butterfly Garden, we're doing that at 11:00 a.m. So we'll have some students out there, and that's gonna be a lot of fun. And then the Village Cafe report, I did want to highlight because that was about, I think, a lot of things, you know, that you've highlighted, Trish, around more collaboration, better communications in the village. Lot of good information. Lynn Kramer's always happy to come talk to us, but I thought it was a really good engagement. Not as well attended as some of the other ones, but definitely the feedback was really good. And, oh, and last thing, of course, like, we're always happy to see what's happening in Mayor's Court. And, you know, the fact that everything that we do, that we can keep in town related to those litigation issues, we do. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. Appreciate that. Thank you for being so willing to do that without my asking you.
You know, I'm happy to improvise, so yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All righty, so we're at public hearings and legislation. No second readings. Okay, I think we're good. All right, so Judy, if you could read by title only, the first reading of ordinance 2025-6.
This is repealing Section 242.01, composition classification of the codified ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, in enacting new Section 242.01, composition classification, to add a second community outreach specialist position.
Can I get a motion in a second, please? So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. I'm looking at Chief. Yep, we had that conversation.
All right, good evening. So, coming back to council with the second COS position. So first and foremost, I think the last time we had a discussion about the COS position, it was under the kind of go-go-go of our victim advocate role that was also incoming. And so I think the two issues got a bit conflated, so I'm coming back to council. I wanted to isolate the COS need in and of itself, separate from that victim advocate role. I want to make sure that we understand that those are two totally different needs, that this ask is strictly based on the COS. So provided you guys a memo, couple of things I want to highlight. So, the need for this second position is, of course, first and foremost, the proven success of the current COS role speaks for itself, I think. Not only the statistics and the data that have been presented in annual reports, all of the different reports that Florence has brought to council, and, I mean, my goodness, all of the different, how many times has someone just approached you randomly to praise Florence and the role that she has in the community and on the team? So, second to that would also be the increased workload that I've talked about a couple of times with council. I also highlighted that in my annual report. So the scope of work exceeds the capacity of one person currently, and I can't stress that enough. The community outreach program continues to grow, and we anticipate an even greater need in the future. As our community grows, those needs will grow as well. Continuity and future planning. I think I highlighted this in my previous memo as well. Obviously, I say and joke with Florence and Jess constantly. I'd keep her for a lifetime, but we know that nobody stays for a lifetime, so we have to do some backfilling, right? We have to make sure that we're preparing for her inevitable retirement, which she much deserves. But if you're listening, Florence, please stay forever. And then obviously, I can't reiterate enough, this is separate and independent of the victim advocacy role. So that need was, was and still exists, but I want to make sure that it's understood that whether or not we took on those responsibilities, the second COS position is still something that we need. And then, so just in summary, I want to, you know, highlight the community impact, the success of the program, the growing need, and then the fact that, you know, we have seen much success from this program and will continue to do that as we grow upon the first role with the second one. So, what questions can I answer for council?
Well, first of all, thank you for the memo because it was very clear in separating the two. And I think maybe at a previous meeting, I might have completed the two, and I apologize for that. So again, I think you were very clear in that regard. So, interestingly enough, my note that I wrote has not a lot to do with the COS position. It actually refers to a comment or phrase in there, and Amy, I'm looking at you. It's just a little phrase. It says, "Chief remain as a contract employee." And I know it's not pertinent to COS, but are we not considering slowing down or minimizing the number of folks on contract?
Is it in the ordinance?
No, it's not in this ordinance. My comment on the ordinance is, great, let's move forward. But in the, I think the memo or the appendix or something does say that Chief Burge will may remain as a contract employee. And so I'm just raising the issue and asking the question, are we doing anything? Did we not agree, and am I mistaken about the direction of the law?
The only ones that have contracts is Judy, myself, and Amy.
Okay.
All the rest of them do not have contracts.
Okay, well, there is a comment in it that said that. It just piqued my interest, so again.
It's twenty, yeah.
Not about the COS, but I just wanted to raise that issue because it did pique my interest. So we can table that for now, but I just want to make sure we're saying and doing the right things in that regard. Any other comments or questions with Chief regarding the COS position?
It's in Section 2.
It sure is. That's, can I hop up there, Chief? Do you mind?
Absolutely, for me.
That's a great catch, Kevin, and not one that I had noticed before. And while we're rewriting 242, we might want to think about striking that word. I hesitate to do that on the fly. This is two, this is first reading, right?
Yeah, first reading.
So we could strike it before second read. Let's do that. Are you comfortable, you're not gonna, Judy, are you comfortable with that not being a substantial change? Okay, then I'm gonna look at that, Kevin, between now and the next meeting, and we maybe will. I didn't, hadn't noticed that was in 242, and that probably should come out. I think what's intended to say there is that the chief is going to be a nonclassified exempt employee.
Right.
And, you know, the word "contract" and "exempt" kind of has been conflated several times over the years. So I'll look at that a little bit more closely, and more to come at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Appreciate that. All right, thank you, Amy, and thank you, Chief, and colleagues. Any other comments or questions of Chief?
So, you know, I actually didn't feel like you needed to make the case, but I appreciate the clarification. So, I think my question, or I guess, maybe if we could talk a little bit more about, you know, this came up five, six years ago when we had a lot of, you know, work around, like, what does the evolution of our, you know, police team look like? And so I guess maybe the thing to speak to is, is this growing our police team? Or is this transitioning, you know, like kind of prioritizing, or just how do you?
It's certainly growing our community outreach team, for sure, which, as a police department employee, I suppose, on a bigger, yes, the answer's yes to that question. We would be growing our team, yes.
So I think the point was, we don't necessarily need more, we need different folks. folks on the police team.
Okay.
Or whatever. And so I guess I'm just wondering, like, how you think about, like, what this looks like. I mean, so are we just, are we adding numbers to the police team? Are we, like, kind of changing?
Yes, this would be, this would be in addition.
Okay.
This would be in addition.
Your headcount number, whatever fully staffed is. Staffed, that's the word I'm looking for, thank you. That's up by one now.
Yes, yeah. Overall, right, of course, yeah.
Yep.
Fully staffed is only for, like, two weeks anyway.
Yeah.
Never last, never last. It was, it was good.
Never last.
I, I remember that day.
I'll take the wins where I can get it.
Indeed, indeed. Okay, that's, that's good. Alright, straight, Trish?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Alright, Chief, thank you much. We will pretty up a word of two, and see you in a couple of weeks.
Alright.
Alright.
I want to make one more comment.
Sure, sure.
One more, this was a comment from the village manager in May that didn't get changed. We're also going to look at taking out that word two on T W O, on 24201. It talks about part-time officers, reserve officers, part-time dispatchers, clerks, and it used to read "an outreach specialist," and it's now been redlined to "two." So, we're going to look into that as well, and that word may come out on your second read.
Okay.
Because none of the others have.
Hard number.
Correct. None of the other roles have a hard number on them.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thanks, everyone. That's first reading, and as we said, there'll be some changes, and we'll see 2025-06 again. At this juncture, we would like to talk about 2025-20, but we need to, first of all, entertain a motion and a second to untable that piece of, that resolution. So moved?
Second.
Alright, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, so, the item is now on the agenda fully, and Judy, if you could, by title only, read resolution 2025-20.
This is adopting law enforcement video records policy for fees and processing.
And I feel like we now need to do another motion to just discuss it, so I will take a motion in a second. If we don't, don't worry about it.
No, it's on the table.
We're all, we're all, we're all excited now. We just want to, we want to be movers and shakers. Alright, who is leading this discussion?
I certainly can.
Okay.
So, our conversation at the last council meeting on this policy was really helpful. And then we went back and worked and reworked the language. And I think, I believe, what you'll see in your packet tonight reflects all the changes that we discussed at the last meeting. Trish, I think you were the one that had asked that we make it clear that it'll be $75 per hour. And then the, the red lines, and we don't normally put red lines in your packet, but this was the easiest way to show you exactly what changes have been made from last version to this version. So, for the processing of requests and payment, you'll see that it shows now, when the request comes in, there is going to be an effort made. If more than one request come, to apportion the costs between the requesters. And then, once it's done, once it's been billed, and somebody else requests the record, they'll, it'll be given free of charge as the work will have already been done. Other significant changes fall under the exceptions language in terms of the enumerated list of who will pay and who won't. So, that's, that now includes village residents, as we've discussed. The only issue that came up with that, that we tossed around amongst ourselves, was the idea that then someone could feel compelled to, to give their identity in order to be, in order to satisfy that exemption, they'd have to establish residency in the village. I don't have, I don't have much of a legal concern with that, because they could always opt to just pay for the record and not establish themselves as a resident. But that was something that had come up, so I, I wanted to mention it to all of you. And then, I don't know if it was Judy or Chief, but somebody found those other one, those other exemptions that we put on to the list that also seemed prudent and applicable. So, do with it what you will. I am open to your thoughts, and we can, you know, we can work on the document if you want tonight, or bring you back another version if you prefer that.
Alrighty, I have two questions written down, but I feel like there was something else. So, oh, so, well, I'll just start with this. There was a comment in there that suggested that whatever we charge for the work does not include any legal work or any of your time. And my question is, how often, on a typical request for a, a redacted video, for a video record, do we spend legal time?
So, if you, if you'd like somebody to break down what that statute says in terms of what can and can't be charged, you could talk to the chief, because she could give you quite the explanation on what that lets us charge. But it will never get to the point of legal fees. $75 an hour just won't. I mean, that is, that, in terms of the cost of everything that goes into redacting these video records, it would never, it's never really going to reach the value of what it costs to get this done. And then, in terms of, what did you ask? How often do I see these?
How often are you asked to weigh in?
Occasionally, but I'm always asked to weigh in in a way that is perfectly teed up for the answer. We have a very specific question. This is the scenario. What do we redact, and what don't we redact? Never, could you look at this video and tell us what you would redact? Your staff is far more skilled at identifying that than I am. But, so I don't know. I don't actually think, from a video records perspective, that there's a lot of legal fees that have been incurred because of that. I think most of the time that I spend on public records is non-video record.
Hmm, gotcha. Okay, okay. Well, I do appreciate your suggesting that, that $75 will not get close to the actual cost. And I want to emphasize, for anyone that's listening, and I, I actually read the portion of the R C that said this, because I wanted to be sure, because I'm disappointed slightly that it's not meant for, to, to go upwards of $75 an hour of the time we spend on it. It's just $75 for each hour of video.
Video produced, I believe, is the way the statute reads.
Right, right, right. So, it's like, so, 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 anyone who might be thinking, oh, no, we don't want to have you charged. No, we're not charging for our time. We're, it's just a fee that the state allows us to, to, to charge. And again, it's, it's not going to get close to what it actually costs us to do it. It's just a fee, and whatever anybody's motivation is. So, I, I certainly, you know, am, am in support of it, because it's nowhere near trying to cover our costs. It's just a, it, it just goes towards some, covering some costs, but not, nowhere near the real cost. So, this, I have this con, there's a convoluted question here, but, but let me begin it with, how often would someone, Judy, make a records request and then decide not to take it?
Uh, very often.
Very often.
Okay. That tees up my question real, well, nicely, man. The whole thing about,
Paying in advance or paying in, after a fact, sure.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, if there was one person, we're going to tell them, it could cost as much, and that's what you might have to pay, and then we'll tell you what the actual cost is. So, I guess the scenario I'm trying to present is, if we get four requests, I'd like for all of them to hear that same thing. Because you may have to pay this by yourself, because the other three people could pull out. In other words, I don't want to say, three people asked for this, so it's going to take $75 an hour. You're only one-third of it, so we're only going to charge you 25. I don't want to say that. And then have these other people drop off. And then, we're, we've promised somebody will take 25 from you, but it's actually going to cost 75, because we don't have any other, the other two people. So, again, it's.
You want kind of a, lack of a better word, a jerk clause. I don't, I don't think that we can put a jerk clause in there, because we would have already engaged in the redaction process, then we would let each entity know, this is what you owe, and we can't punish the one good citizen who's like, but I'm, I thought it would be this much, because the other three failed to show up and pay what they were supposed to pay. I think that's just the cost of doing this kind of.
Well, if they were a citizen, they'd get it for free, but, you know.
Right.
I am, we're not, we haven't passed that yet. I'm not sure if I'm 100%.
I mean.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
According to this, yeah.
Well, and that was our doing. It's not state law.
Right.
Right? Amy, we, we were, we were thinking about.
Well, state law gives us that purview.
Right.
Indeed. And when I talked about it last meeting, I was looking at Riley, and I'm used to looking over at Riley, and he's not there. We need to get a cardboard cutout. And so it was for the news, for our local news compared to the other folks.
Now, see, I keep saying this thing, and everyone just looks at me like, she said some words, we don't know what they meant. They're print media. Print.
Yeah.
Print a newspaper.
Yeah.
You think they should get to see a video because why? I mean, the reason that we get requests from news media is they want to use clips. That's why. It's not because they're trying to solve the case themselves by looking at some body cam video.
Understood.
You know, and the body cam video that does get released because there's question, people have question about what occurred, that is covered. I mean, that, any, any sort of questionable action that should be released is covered in the additions that actually Paige found on the news, in the new Sunshine Law Manual. So, I don't, that one doesn't concern me.
Well, and ultimately, they could get it for free, like you pointed out last time, if the others come very quickly to obtain it.
Yeah.
Once it's created.
Yeah, you've got to be patient. Sit back and let the other folks pay for it.
Well, and they're never first in line. They are not, because they don't have to be. They are not vying for viewers.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Alright, and Brian, I interrupted you on that one point about residents. We, I mean, we, we, we put that in as a possible, and I'm not, I'm not 100% sure where I stand on it now, but I'd like for you all to discuss it.
And you didn't interrupt me. I mean, I will say, you know, I think one video can help you clarify the story. So, so I have a different view on that. And I think, secondly, the Y S News is just as interested in breaking stories as the Daily News, or, you know, maybe only the Daily News. But, anyway, so, I mean, those are two things that I, I don't think matter particularly. So, I just have one thing, if, if I've still got the mic.
Yep.
Um, I guess, I feel like it's not an issue, an impediment on passing this resolution, but there needs to be some kind of process on this piece of, when there's multiple requests, there should be an internal process that I wouldn't mind seeing, but I think in particular, a timeline thing, like, so how long are we going to wait? You know, like, do we wait a week, and then we see how many requests we get, or whatever? But, that part is not clear to me, like, how that all works. So, so I think we should clarify that. Because, and, so I think we can still pass this resolution, but I think internally, we should have something where we can say, you know, put on the website, whatever, this is what's going to happen. Because.
That, I, I, see, I thought it made it, but what I thought this meant on, on the processing of requests and payment was, because it was what I was, had thought initially, between the time of the first request and the time processing is completed, that's when all requests are taken in. When processing is completed, then the door closes. That's who gets charged.
Okay. And actually, I'm, I have no preference on that, honestly. I just, I don't think that's clear in this, but if we can clarify it in this, or, you know, but that was just the one thing, you know, I think we should signal when, you know, when, when the cutoff is, I guess, you know, and when you get charged, and when you get a free, or whatever, I don't know. So.
Are you looking for, like, a number of days? Because I think that might be hard, depending on the situation.
Right. Well, that's why, like, I'm okay with what Judy said. Like, if the window is, like,
Until redaction.
Requested, processed. I, I don't have a preference on that. I just want it to be clear. So, because I don't think that is right now.
What are your suggestions to clarify with them?
Uh, could be what Judy said, or if anyone has any other ideas. So.
I mean, so the, the, I mean, certainly the, I mean, I'm wondering if it's the memo or the appendix that, of the Exhibit A, rather, that talked about the multiple requests, divvying up.
It's processing the request and payment.
Gotcha, yeah.
I had, I, we have been bouncing this around in multiple forms. So, in one form, I had it fairly specifically that door opens with first request, door closes when redactions have been completed. Anything received during that period of time is charged equally. This got, I don't know, whittled a bit, so that that, that's not clear, and I don't even know if other folks were in agreement with, with that being a correct method. So.
But I, I think ultimately, what resonates with me is, like, let's just, you know, get something out there, and if we need to tweak. But, yeah, that was just the one thing I thought, if we could clarify, so we don't have any, yeah.
The realities are, we aren't, we can't put a number of days on it. When requests come in, the redaction process is going to start. And then, when it says, "The village will issue invoices to requesters by mail or, email or regular mail, once a record is redacted and costs, costs are charged. If subsequent requests are made, no further charges will be levied." So, if it takes two weeks to get a slew of video redacted, then at the end of that two weeks, when it's all released, that's it. Anyone who makes a request after that is going to be receiving it free of charge. But if we say, requests received within seven days, and then we're still getting requests on the eighth, ninth, and 10th day, then we're cutting ourselves off from try to portion that pie among all the requesters. So, I think that the, the window closes for charges once the work is done.
And just so I'm clear, like, I'm good with all that. I just want it to be clear. If you think it's clear in this, then, yeah, I just.
I think procedure, I, in terms of putting this into process, that's as, probably as close as we're going to get to clarity beyond that.
And you think this is clear to the requesters? Well, let's just make sure it's clear to the requesters.
And that's an option.
Yeah.
So, again, I'm, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying, let's make it very clear. Yeah, and honestly, requesters aren't going to read the, our resolution anyway, so we have to have something up there.
Well, they may, they may have access to it, because we have to figure out what it means to put them on notice that they're going to be charged. Putting them on notice they're going to be charged is probably a little cover sheet that says, you're going to be charged, here's our policy, and then blast that out by email, because I think most requests come in by email for these videos, don't they?
It's, it's Floyd. It's Floyd. We get a lot of phone calls.
For video requests?
Mm, yeah.
Well, then we're going to have to figure out how we put them on notice.
Well, when, there's.
And then there's the, then there's the big outline question of anonymous requesters that make a request by phone, but at some point they're, it, it's complicated. This is extremely complicated.
This is a question I wanted to ask you, since you mentioned it again. Can I do a public's request, a public request, or a records request for the requesters? I mean, can people, I mean, are people allowed to stay anonymous?
There's a case law on that, Brian. I'd have to research that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, people absolutely can stay anonymous. We get requests, you get, all communities get requests all the time from, you know, ohioegleeye@gmail.com, and then, I'm making that up, whoever's email address that is.
Because I guess.
ThomasPayne.com.
And then, yes, exactly, right. And so, when those requests come in, we respond to them accordingly, and it doesn't matter who, who the person is behind the request.
Right. But, I mean, is any records requestor, like, I mean, totally anonymous? I mean, or?
Sure, in that, in that circumstance.
So, if they say anonymous, I can't request that.
We don't, you won't even know. I mean, they'll send it in.
You're asking two different questions. You're asking whether you have access, whether you have access to make a public records request for a list of requesters that have come into the village. That I would need to research. There is law on it, but I don't want to speak to it off the top of my head. My inclination is to say that that is public record, though we don't keep it that way. But you could make a request for every public records request received by the village. Those would be records, and those are maintained that way. But what you would see is thomaspain@gmail.com.
Right.
Not, you know, there would be no more specificity than that.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yep. I mean, it's what I thought, you know, so, yeah.
Yeah. And, and, and I think we're, we're all motivated by equity or fairness. You know, if we've done the work, you know, why charge this third or fourth person to, that's making the request? Although, I don't mind, I wouldn't mind charging everybody's account, but.
We would never profit for the record, but.
Oh, yeah, there's no way. Yeah, yeah, no way for profit.
But for the record, majority of them will profit. Just saying.
Well, maybe not the majority.
Because the majority of the viewers, they all get paid for it.
Yeah, well, that's.
Yeah. Well, anyway, my only point is that, like, clarity. And so, I think, you know, again, it doesn't have to be days, but it can just be from first request to, like, finishing redaction.
Yeah.
I mean, that just is a simple thing to me, that I think I would. I mean, that just is a simple thing to me, that I think I wouldn't be clear on that if I read this resolution, so.
So you think it needs more work in it?
Well, if you flip the page, that's the part, that was the thing I wasn't doing. Because Johnny was like, the next page. Yeah, it's right there on the next page. Apart, issue invoices to requesters.
Right.
And I can tell you that from an internal standpoint, that's very clear to me, because I, I know when the requests come in, and I know when the redaction's complete.
Yeah. So, at the end of the day, we will, well, it'll be $75 per hour that we can charge of, of, of video produced. And does it ever go, do we ever produce beyond 60 minutes of video?
Yes.
Oh, really? Wow. Okay. I mean, this is not, at the end of the day, not a real big deal from, and, and it's never a big deal about revenue, because that's, it's, it's the reverse of, of revenue. I did have a question. Once, once it's paid for, Judy, to your scenario earlier, and then someone else comes back and asks, makes the record request, do we charge for, like, for the CD, or whatever?
It's not going to be on a DVD. It's just, they're too massive. They get it through Dropbox, so I just, yeah. I mean, it, it, we can charge them for, you know, three flash drives, or four flash drives, or whatever, but.
We either put them on a flash drive, that's what's easiest for us. I, I know when we get them to Judy, she'll do Dropbox on occasion, but we use USBs, and those are $8 apiece.
Okay. That you charge people?
Yes.
Okay. Amy's coming back.
Um, it's, yeah, any other fees applicable to requests not related to video records, oh my gosh, a typo, I will get that changed, including the cost of copies or data storage devices, are not within the scope of this policy and are still in full effect.
Still in full effect, okay.
So that's where we get that $8.
Okay, good, good. All right. As long as we're not losing anything along the way, other than what we're already losing. It just, you know, we're not winning on this. But Brian and Trish, y'all feel the language is good enough to pass this as is? Or do you, do you wanna do work on it? And are we getting active requests as we speak?
Yeah, matter of fact, we're dealing with one where we fulfilled numerous video requests, and it was followed up by numerous video requests.
Okay. Duly noted.
So, yeah, I.
By the way, that particular person may or may not be charged under the policy if you decide you're not gonna charge residents. So, just saying.
Um, so, yeah, so I will make a motion to add to, and I'm trying to figure out.
You know, Brian, it, it, oh, you, did you wanna go through it specifically?
No, it's just under that processing the request and payment section. I was just gonna say, I wanna, I was gonna make a motion to say, at the end, where it says between all requesters during the period of redaction.
But I think the next two sentences do say that.
Right.
Well, the last sentence. Once a record is redacted and costs are charged, if subsequent requests are made, no further charges will be levied. I do think that covers your concern.
Okay. Well, my main philosophy is that, like, as Judy said in her email to us, like, I don't wanna hold this up. So, if we're all good that that's clear enough, then, yeah, I'm not gonna worry about it.
I also will say that if I was a betting woman, you're gonna see this policy again, because once we try to start moving into practice, into practice, I believe there will be tweaks that need to be made, and that may very well be one that we come back with you, to you with. But at this point, I'll let you get onto the exemptions. I don't mind. I don't mean to keep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, counsel, really, I mean, that number one exemption, residents, do we, what do we wanna do with that?
I like it.
I do, too.
Yeah. What, you don't like it?
I don't mind it. I just, I mean, I just heard about this, of this one incident where, I mean, we're presuming, what are we presuming? Do what, 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 what do you, what is the benefit here? What is the rationale for, for allowing residents to not?
They're part of our tax base. If they want a record, they can get a record.
Do we wanna put any limits on that? I mean, I, 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 I am not comfortable, even with residents having free-for-all, if they're just gonna make a whole bunch of requests, because then that, I think, that's not what we want. I mean, if that's, and, and that would be an unintended effect.
What are we, what are you trying to curb? Do we have, are there people that make, like, you know, 50 a year for, you know, that have to be redacted? I mean, what's?
Maybe not 50, but maybe, what do we say, 20? Yeah.
Sure.
Residents?
If you look down that list, if you, if you're, if you don't find yourself in any of these other exemptions, why do you need that video? That's my question. If you are none of these people, why do you need that video? And I, I mean, it, it's super easy for me to see the cops over next door, and a whole lot of yelling going on, and decide, I don't watch that stuff. I can get that for free.
I see what you're saying.
So I'm, I'm, I'm less in love with, with the resident thing.
Yeah, that's a lot of time.
Having, having had the distinct, not at all a pleasure of looking through things that have needed to be redacted so that they could go out, I will say that, I would say that much of what is captured on body cam should not ever be viewed, except by a lawyer, immediate family, someone who needs to see it, because it is often devastatingly personal. And so, the least I think you can do to throw a roadblock in the way of that is to charge. That's the least you could do to throw a roadblock. Now, I think many people have a, a moral structure within themselves where they're never gonna ask to see those things. They know that, they, they know that's not something that they should be privy to. And then there are folks who have been brought up on internet, and it's just all fun and games and entertainment.
You know what I'd like to do? I'm not making a motion yet, but I'd like to strike the residence of the village exemption as of the above stated reasons, and I'd prefer to strike it now and go without it, and then perhaps consider bringing it back. Because I just, I'm concerned about real-world circumstances that are in our history that would have us doing a lot of work and not able to charge.
No, I would agree with that. I wasn't aware of those issues.
Yep. All right. So I move that we strike exemption number one from the resolution, from the resolution. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, that's two to one, I think. Any opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed.
Okay. So, based two to one, that resident exemption is gonna be pulled, be stricken. And again, I think if, if it makes sense, we can consider bringing it back. I just don't wanna, you know, if it had never been a problem and a concern, we wouldn't be talking about it right now, but because it can be a concern. And again, we're never gonna profit, but I don't want us to be abused as well. So we've made a modification. Brian, you were about to make a motion, but did you, did you end up being satisfied with?
Did the language change?
Oh, yeah.
What, the language here?
So, yeah, I mean, I think as long as our solicitor is cool with, uh, that, you know, we don't have an ambiguity issue, then I'm cool with that.
Okay. And on the premise, to, to Amy and Judy's comment that we would likely see this again, you know, I, I think I'd like to go ahead and move this forward now, and then wait for it to come back for whatever reason it needs to come back. Okay? That being said, the chair will now entertain a motion to approve this modified version of the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. I see any, that motion is passed. Thank you very much for that lively discussion and everyone's input. We are now down to Resolution 2025-25. Judy, if you could read that by title only.
This is authorizing the village manager to execute an annexation agreement with Miami Township.
Take the motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Got it?
I'll start it. Amy can help as well. Uh, this is a property that was identified by the Comprehensive Land Use Plan years ago for future growth and development. We've actively stubbed utilities towards this property, and it has been brought to our attention that it is now up for chance to be developed, so we wanna be able to try to annex it into the village. Uh, we have spoken with Miami Township, and we have signed documents as well from them. Amy's been working on it as well, and I understand that the DDC is here to speak on it as well.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, was that voted on by the township trustees?
It was, yes.
Majority, I mean, unanimous?
Three to one.
Okay.
Or three to zeros.
Yep.
They all signed it. Amy, is there anything else that you would like to?
You said this is DDC rep?
It's a DDC rep.
Sir, if you wanna comment, feel free. Okay. Good enough. Um, oh, okay, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask that question. It's not time for me to ask the question I was gonna ask. All right. Any other discussion up here?
I think the only thing I'll say is, um, yeah, no, we've kinda blown off the inclusionary zoning thing. Um, and, you know, five years ago, when we blew it off, it was because we're too small, and Yellow Springs isn't gonna have any development, but we continue to see that. So I just wanted to lodge that comment that, um, you know, I think we could do better in our zoning code, but anyway, that's it.
Yeah, I would've asked Meg a question if she were here, but she's not, so. Um, any other comments regarding the resolution as is?
I do not.
Okay. All right. And this is approving, giving the village manager the ability to move forward with the annexation agreement. All those in favor of this resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Hearing none, that motion is passed. We're now down to citizen concerns, and we're doing pretty good on the schedule, I think. Uh, we're, to citizen concerns, this is a part of the agenda, part of the meeting, where anyone present can come up to the mic. You have, you will be allowed three minutes. Uh, we have our trusty Big Brother clock over my left shoulder that will indicate when your time is up. We ask that you are considerate of that time limitation. And if you tend to get up after someone else has already spoken, we ask that you issue unique comments and not repeat anything else that's been spoken. And council is not obligated to respond to any questions or concerns presented. Do we have any citizen concerns? Please identify yourself and indicate your relationship to the village.
Hi, I'm Rick Sanders. I don't live in the village. I may live right next to what you just agreed to annex, but it was never make, I never heard where this property is. Um, I live on East Enin, and of course, I don't want a big old development coming up right next to me, but I seriously doubt that most of the people in this village would wanna see it, would wanna see that. And I know you didn't just agree to do a development, but it seems like you pretty much did. And if that's not true, I would love to hear, I'd love to be set straight. But, and I'd, I'd love to hear more detail about what is proposed there. I've sort of half-heard before people decided they'd said too much, that there were, there are condos there, and perhaps multiple-level buildings, and it's a large field, and it looks like a lot of people would be living there. And I think the impact on the village would be extensive. Just the, my overall impression from a, from a distance is that we went from a village that didn't need a lot of, a whole lot of residents to survive, to one that did, once the industry was all gone. And that with, the village has gotten a little bit more determined, and, um, uh, and has gone to greater lengths to get residential housing built here. Anyway, that's probably not irrelevant also, but the, my point is really that I have my doubts that, that most people in the village would be in favor of what may be the plan. And, um, and I would like to hear any sort of, any sort of clarification. I know the vote was already made, but I would be interested in any clarification of what development is planned, and is that, in fact, the large plot in between the cell tower and the old brown farm?
He is correct. It is on East Enin Road. It's currently right next to his property. Um, but they, you agreed to annex it in, and we've not done anything with the development, so.
Yeah, so, so no real answers to the, to the detailed questions. Yeah, this was strictly annexation with, God knows what will happen, you know, but we're not responsible for the next step, but annexation is, is all we have done up to this point.
Well, and this isn't even actually the annexation.
Yes, it's, you, we've authorized Johnny to negotiate an annex.
It's the annexation agreement which will trigger the ability to file the annexation petition, and then you'll see the annexation again here in a few months.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that, Amy, and I think that definitely did make things clear. Ben, could you advise Amy how great she sounded using that microphone? Okay. Just.
Clarity, see.
See, it worked, clarity.
My computer wasn't plugged in.
Understood. Uh, Dino.
Oh, man, show, show and tell. Look at this, look at this, I love it.
Thank you.
So, Dino Palata, local resident of 225 Zini Avenue, Dino's Cappuccinos. I don't really pay attention to the Yellow Springs open discussion very much. However, this was brought to my attention, and the reason that it's, that it's of interest to me is when it turns to the second page, is because you've got Mark Baker as an administrator or moderator. You know, when normal citizens are getting on, popping off, and doing polling, that's fine, you know, to each their own. However, when I see a leadership, somebody on the leadership committee, if you wanna use that term, or just administration committee, I got a little bit of a problem with what was written here, and when you're asking for the police to do something, and if they don't follow through on something, then they, then a police officer should be terminated, and if the village manager doesn't do something, then they should be terminated. And coming from somebody in a leadership position, I don't think that's a responsible action for them. I understand free speech, but I also think there's a responsibility to what goes on in, in open discussion. I don't know what you guys have ability to monitor that, or, or to moderate that, or to speak with, at, 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 at least with the administration. I mean, you know, we get, you know, we all know what comes out there. There's a lot of stuff that comes out just from the citizens, and that's good. But when it comes from this side, that's my concern. I don't like it. I don't like it, I don't like, it doesn't, it just doesn't feel good. It doesn't feel responsible, for lack of better words. And I think, just wanted to bring it to your attention, for you guys to look at it. And if there's anything you can do, great. If nothing, great. But again, just wanted to bring it to your attention. It just doesn't seem like it's in the right path to bully, for lack of better words.
Thank you. Andy. Thank you, Dino. Real appreciate that. Chief, I, I appreciate what you, what you said about why you don't get on open discussion. And I will, I will just, I will, I will, I'll make, I'll make a comment about my personal experience. This is to the residents of the Village of Yellow Springs. We all serve at large, and so I, I talk about us having a citizenry, or the residents. I don't use the term constituents often, because I think when people, some people use the term constituents, they're referring to a particular group of people. Several years ago, when I was on, I was on council at the time, and I, I made a comment. Brian will probably remember it, and Johnny maybe too, but it was, you know, there's probably a list of about 10 things that Stokes should never say again. And, and. And, and when I made that comment, um, you know, the audience reacted in a negative way, some people in the audience did. And, and quite simply, the reason I don't like going on these, this open discussion in particular was that night I stood near that door and someone walked by me, I had to step out of the way to let them out the door. 10 minutes later, on open discussion, um, they referred to me as a little bitch. I would have preferred that they called me a little bitch to my face, right over there, so I could explain my comments more. And, and maybe she would just call me, man, just a regular sized bitch. And I, I'm saying it somewhat tongue in cheek, but the point is the danger with this unreal virtual reality stuff, one danger is folks are purposely not accountable. Calling me a bitch to my face, you'd have to be accountable. I'm not a violent person, so, so I wouldn't, wouldn't react that way. But I wish I'd had the opportunity to explain to that individual what I meant by what I said. Few weeks ago, I used the bug line, above the bug line, uh, comment. Someone was offended, I immediately apologized. And if you remember, the minutes of that meeting did not capture my apology and I raised that issue. I wanted it to be known that when I offended someone that I apologized. And that was real world. This virtual stuff, again, to the voting public, the residents of Yellow Springs, every one of you, I'm accountable to as an individual resident of this village. And I think highly of you because I don't know what you do here. If I knew everything you did and say here, I would think differently about you. And you don't want me to think differently about you. You want me to be in a position where I give you my all for anything that you ask for. And, and, and I will maintain that until you give me reason otherwise. So I think I love the fact that I can check in on my kids and family members and whatnot on Facebook. Open discussion, I've probably made about three comments and two of them were apologies. Another thing, I said when we were leaving from the Zoom world, coming back here, real live, in, 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 uh, real time, I said I didn't want to be in the room with a bunch of unmasked people. And someone said that I was creating a double standard. And I said, you're right, I apologize, I should not have said that. So all that to say, um, I don't know what else I want to say. I just think this, this thing with open discussion, and I'm again speaking to the residents of this village, each of you is my boss, I sometimes refer to people, you're my boss because you're a resident, I'm, I'm here to support you. And I, I, what I end up doing and, and my sitting in this seat is up to you, the residents of this village. My seat will be open this fall and if I run and you don't want me here, you can not vote for me. That is the power that you have. This, this stuff would tend to make me think less of the individuals who do and say this stuff. And I don't want to be burdened with that, so that is why I don't go there. I do appreciate, um, Dino, you bring this to our attention to let us know what's happening. Um, and so my comments are not in, in direct response to that. It's just saying something that I've said, some of y'all have heard me say that, um, that, that I don't go here because of that instance. And I'm happy that, that individual, I know who they are, but, but, you know, it was, that was one incident. And then we have to question, who's the real person? Who's the, who, who are you really? Are you really the person that walked by me? Or are you the person that called me out of my name first opportunity you got? So, enough said, Dino, if you want to come up here.
One other comment on this, the, the administrators and the moderators here are people that could throw people off of there. And that's, you know, they have the power to, to kick people off open discussion. But who's moderating the moderators? Back to what, you know, your question, you said, who's, to get back to what you, your question when you said about your resolution, who's moderating the moderators? So they can come and do this, but no one's policing them. So again, just another problem, problematic issue with.
Absolutely, okay. Thank you, Dino, thank you very much. Uh, we still are open for open discussion and do, please forgive me if, if anyone felt that I went too far, that was all my personal thing, um.
Well, Kevin, since you did speak at length, I do just want to say there are plenty of other things on open discussion that aren't brought to us, that would be on the flip side of things. Not to mention, you know, the real Yellow Springs school talk that, you know, I got kicked off of and whatever, and, you know, there, there is plenty of this going on that, you know, kind of like, I don't know, like serves everybody's like, you know, different position. So I guess I don't want us to just focus on, focus on one thing when, yeah.
And, and you're right, Brian, and, and, uh, certainly, yeah, the fact that I've gone on, um, you all are, feel free, I, I welcome that if you want to, want to say more, um.
But anyway, I like the tenor of what you said, I just, you know, again, just keeping in mind, like, these kinds of things pop up, like, for every position that people have on an issue. And so I just don't want us to forget that.
Yep.
But are the administrators and moderators the individuals that are creating it?
We don't know about Yellow Springs, real schools talk or whatever it is, but yeah, you know, because that's hidden.
Yep. And my, my little disclaimer will be, um, um, you know, my, my emotions might be a little, little raw right now because I'm dealing with, uh, a family medical, uh, issue. So, you know, I have a very little tolerance for certain things right now. So please forgive me if anyone feels like I, I went overboard. Um, are there any other citizen concerns? All right, hearing none, we will close that item on the agenda and we're moving on to special reports and, wow.
Year is me.
Wow, there you go. The biggie.
All right, so now we get to talk about some great things.
Yeah.
It's been a great year, 2024, has been a fantastic year and we have put some highlights together. It is not everything, it is on the website. Uh, if you want to click on the website, you can actually go in and you can see everything else. Uh, but highlighting the nine new employees from 2024, um, we have done a phenomenal job on grabbing some great talent. So, uh, we have got four, two new dispatchers, two new officers, uh, Elise Giardulo, I'm sorry, three new officers. Uh, Elise Giardulo, did you hear that?
Giardulo.
It's Giardulo. I've got it in my phone, it's Giardulo.
Do you want four syllables?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, but three times six.
All right, so it's a question of three or four syllables. It's actually four syllables to be right, yeah, G R D U L. Yeah, yeah.
That's not the way that I was taught how to say it, I only got the Xenia accent.
Got you, got you, understood.
So, uh, we'll move on to, from that one. I'll go back to my school teacher and complain. Um, and then we have some anniversaries, everybody above 10 years, uh, on there. These are, these are all coming from the managers' reports and things that we, uh, uh, do as well. Events, street fair, pride, summer. So we, uh.
Lots of institutional knowledge here.
A lot of institutional knowledge and, uh, we are only getting better. So we have street fair and then we got, uh, we wanted to highlight the renewable energy, uh, the 100% on that. And then, uh, the police truck is also electric, uh, it's a hybrid. And then we have solar field and we also have the electric charging stations. So we're going above and beyond there. CBE, we got the land out there for sale, uh, Cresco did their expansion, uh, we got the sign out there now, we got power out of the CBE. Uh, so, and, uh, Antioch Midwest is still for sale if anybody wants to buy it. Balanced budget, uh, we did a fantastic job, uh, staff, council, making sure that we've balanced budget this year. And we're still on track to do so. There are some other issues we got going on with some unforeseen things, but, uh, we're moving that way and we have got, uh, Michelle and I have already started talking about starting on budget in July so we can be even further ahead than what we was last year. There is our Lytech application, Meg is, I, I, I want to say she was doing a very strong presentation right there. But she did a great job that night, uh, controlling the comments and the questions. Uh, she just did a phenomenal job and, and, uh, we got the application. We should hear something, May 21st is what we're being told, uh, whether we received it or we did not receive it, so. But we was able to get a successful application in there with a lot of help from a lot of different people, not just the staff at school and, and other community members.
Uh, building. Mission accomplished.
Mission accomplished. Um, I wanted to highlight from Meg's, uh, project values for last year was 28 million, $223,138. Or, I'm sorry, 28 million, 223,138 million dollars, uh, which represented a 308, 8% increase. And, uh, if you took out the schools, it's still 115% increase on projects. Uh, so you can see the number of, uh, permits and what type they are in that as well. Uh, new businesses in town, uh, we wanted to highlight the, uh, January 1st, uh, the Firehouse, uh, Comedy Club opened up. Uh, we have the salons opening up, tattoo, uh, Lucky Bunny Tattoo, Smokehouse, uh, Yellow Springs Smokehouse opened up. So we are still growing, still reaching out and doing things and we have a lot already happening in 25, so a lot more to come. I Works, we did a, uh, pie chart on that one. You can see just from the breakdown, from people entering, uh, citizen's request, 43 of them was in, uh, streets, seven, uh, 45% was in zoning, uh, 8% in, uh, electric, 3% in water and one just general feedback, so. And we are navigating that. Uh, I think a lot of the streets were the, uh, complaints for the sidewalk and streets, that's where all those come in. To make sure that we're doing the sidewalks and clearing them and getting the weeds and vegetation and bushes and all that out of the way of the sidewalks. Highlighted Gaunt Park, we was able to get the drainage problem from the pool fixed finally. We got it to the catch basins, uh, to where the pool doesn't just drain onto the parking lot and then to the soccer, or into the softball field. So once we did that, we was able to blacktop it and you actually got lines out there now so you can park and got a couple of designated handicap, uh, zones. Uh, this year you'll notice already, and I'll, I'll skip four, uh, the wall, we've started doing the wall out front, maintaining and getting it back into shape. Uh, on top of, we had a big tree fall down there by the transformer, so we actually made a, uh, we're making a dumpster corral. So the dumpster's kind of hidden, it's out of the way, so you don't see it when you're out there.
Right.
But, uh, our local contractor is doing a phenomenal job at repairing that wall and putting a, uh, cap on it to be able to preserve it for many years to come. And then the, uh, wheeling Gaunt, uh, committee is preparing to do something else out there. It's in the works, so they're, they'll be utilizing that space as well.
Okay, and is cameras part of that, did I hear?
Is who?
Cameras?
Cameras is part of the train station wheeling.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to be able to try to.
All right, so we'll make sure that passes our policy.
Correct, yes. It will only be watching the statue, uh, and protecting our property. Um, I Works or Civica Plus was a great thing and we're actually pushing this out by the website, I believe, right now. While we're in transition from Civica Plus to the next best and greatest thing, uh, more to come on it. But this has been a, we've had a lot of compliments on this, Ben and the team had done a phenomenal job, Elise and Cameron, uh, and the team making sure that citizens are aware of what's going on on a weekly basis. So this is one of Ben, been one of the highlights for 24, again, communication out there.
I agree.
Um, one of the big improvements, Ben, uh, Ben led discharge and got everybody on board. Uh, we was training, we did a lot of great training for public works and electric guys, but we wasn't training everybody else. So it is now mandatory in 25, we made the change in 24 where staff has to go to training once a month. So we have two sessions, they can either attend the eight o'clock session or the 10 o'clock session. So it's not just electrical, we had CPR, we had first aid, AED training. So staff is fully engaged, fully working safe. Uh, we also made these, uh, stickers, you've probably noticed them on some village vehicles. Instead of putting them on the mirrors to where it was in their way, we put it on the glass to where it shows them to remember their seat belts and their safety glasses. So if they're walking in from a break or something, they've left them in the break room. It's just a triggering, um, just a triggering thought. The center picture I want to highlight, uh, this is Kyle, he is actually doing our safety training for AMP, uh, phenomenal. One of his, uh, slogans and it's on this, uh, poster and I'm going to try to remember it because I can't read it. It's, uh, "Safety is contagious, don't be afraid to spread it." So we actually incorporated with his permission, um, we incorporated it into all of our safety programs. So, uh, it is contagious, so spread as much as you want.
Absolutely.
Another big thing that Ben and I brought back from the, uh, American Municipal Power Training last year, the tech conference in April is what if? So we have been actively, we took off in April, but actively once a month, we give somebody the floor and we say, you got a solid month to come up with a scenario and nobody else knows what it is. And we have done a lot of training. So we started with just the core group and now we've expanded to where if I was to get hit by a bus at 125 miles per hour in downtown Yellow Springs, who's next to fill the spot and how are we doing it? Uh, Ben threw in a one on us, Ben Gunther, what happens if we have five arsonists in the glens on street fair day? So that made a lot of us think, and how do we get there? Chief Burge has brought in scenarios and Elise has brought in a cyber attack. And so next month, we actually invited, uh, Ethan Rabney from Xenia. And we, none of us know what his is and he's coming in, he's going to lay it out and we're going to have to figure it out. So, uh, we're just trying to prepare, you never know. You know, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, so we're trying to be as prepared as we can.
Right.
Great news for the village, uh, we are now in, I believe, and I don't want to say, but I think top 13%. We was, uh, safe, but we went it up a notch and then this year we actually went over the top. We are diamond level status for safety and for RP3 for the nation, not just Ohio, this is a national award. Uh, so we have seven years of zero lost time work for the electric department. So we are diamond level for the safety. And then the RP3 program, Ben started on this three years ago. It had, it was really, he undertook a lot of work, we got a lot of policies in place. But with him doing that, we was able to get the lineman and, and the proper school. We've done a lot of safety, a lot of protocol, documenting things, taking it to the next level. And you have to have a 98%, is that correct? A 98%, we got a 97. So we got to review the application and we had checked, one box that said no when it should have been a yes. So we are 98%, we got our diamond level. And so that carries us for three years and then we resubmit. So we have three more years to improve to get to the 100%, but we are one of very few across the nation, small utility like us that have a diamond level. So it is, I, I can't say enough, I mean, Ben is phenomenal, he worked with a. He worked with Elise, he's worked with his staff, he's worked with myself and got us to the level that we want to maintain. So, great job to him and the crew for getting us to that level. Safety Village and then Paige walks out. So, Paige has brought the Safety Village to a whole nother level. Actually, Safety Village is open, I believe, for enrollment now. It is for the July 14th through the 18th. So, give with Police Department if you want to register for that. They do a phenomenal job with kindergartners to first grade on learning a safety thing for the village. I know they have the, some pool training, they got some electrical training. They do a lot of stuff, teach them how to ride their little cars the proper way. So, another big highlight, third edition was in the mail today. You should have received it, if not, you'll be getting it tomorrow. Other grapevine, so we are three in and it is getting better as we go forward. So, if you have not got yours, look forward to reading it. And they are already trying to figure out what June and July's look like. So, they're on top of it already.
Excellent.
So.
And did we promote I Works in the recent one? I mean, because I haven't gotten it yet.
I don't think we did. We will make sure it's in the next one and maybe a link to a training on that one as well. Multimodal path, this one is the ODOT grant, it was finished, finally got it up and running. And yes, we did maintain the snow on it as requested when we got the streets clear. So, we was able to get a lot of that taken care of for the residents. It has been used quite a bit. It looks phenomenal as well. I love that we was able to go concrete versus asphalt. It makes it to last longer and easier to maintain for us. Public improvements, you'll see that we've been doing some LED signs, flashing signs, trying to get it safety for the sections that we need some more safety for. The team has been doing a lot of repairs. We had a gazebo on the bike path that was falling down, so we taped it off and then we took it down so it didn't fall down on individuals and we put a new one up there. So, Tanner and his crew's been doing also improvements in different parks on signage. And we got some deer fencing, getting ready to go up on some community gardens as soon as we get it. Go back to February of '24, we don't want to relive that day, but that was when we had the storm come through. It's just a highlight of how fast we was able to recover from it. We put in '24, I actually think it's '19, that we had the lights back on to all the residents. But with this, and I have to give record grading a shout out. Amy was able to write a phenomenal letter to AT&amp;T to get them on board. They're in the process of changing the last pole out. And she should have got an email last week because now we got a lot more that she's got to help us get changed. So, AT&amp;T's got some more cat poles on West South College and throughout the village that we're needing their help to change as well. Center circuit is in progress, that was a five year, we've had to fast track it. So, we have now got the gate extended, we're getting the grounding ring in there. And we are actively working on getting the last right away easement to be able to put in the third circuit onto that facility. We already got the equipment, we're got the contractors, we're just waiting for that last piece of the puzzle to get changed over and right away to be signed.
Johnny, real quick, I know that's providing greater capacity. But is that circuit serving, or ask this way, which circuit is serving Spring Meadows?
Spring Meadows is right now on the west circuit. Yes. So, is not adding capacity. What it is, is it's spreading, splitting up the load. So, the high school is on the west circuit. They're going to take a lot of that power. So, we're creating a center circuit to where we can spread the load out evenly across the area. So, capacity is only if we go larger with a substation where we're able to get AES to bring us more power.
And thanks for that clarification because that's important, but you did answer the question, thank you, appreciate that.
Electrical outages, Ben was here, he highlighted that 74 minutes is our average. The nation average is 135 minutes. So, that's part of that Diamond Level status that we're actively, when they have an outage, another thing that Ben mentioned is, is they go out the next day and they figure out what we can do to make it sure that it doesn't happen again. It may not solve it, but we need to be able to do one thing to be able to create it from the scrolls and different areas that we have problems. Light up Navajo Nation, we are set to go July 18th through the 26th this year. Actually, Ben and his team are doing a presentation at the technical conference next week at American Municipal Power, talking about their experience out there and how well it went and how they trying to encourage more municipalities to join. Water meter change outs are going great. We are, I want to say we're probably 94% changed out. Please call, get it scheduled if you have one in your house that's not been changed out. We don't want to go to where we're start shutting people off. So, reach out to the meter readers.
You're in the 90th percentile now, but you, I mean, that sounds like a big jump.
It is. Adam and Lucas have been knocking them out. They had like 180 something and I think they're down to less than 100 now to change out. So, Adam and Lucas has been doing a phenomenal job knocking on the doors, being able to get in there and change them out. And Rose is entering them as fast as she can get them. Water towers was another big accomplishment. I know that everybody don't like that they're just solid blue, but artwork can come later. We wanted to make sure that they maintain for 20 years. And if there's artwork that goes on them, they can be funded some way other than trying to make sure that they're functioning for the next 20 years. So, thanks to council for allowing us to grab a hold of a great pricing because I think it would be triple of what we got if we was to do it today versus when we pulled the plug on it. So, they are great shape. The one has already passed its one-year warranty and inspection and the other one will be done this spring as well. Brad is there on the PFOS, he had Ohio EPA come out toward the facility. And one of their suggestions on the PFOS was, man, you're so close, what if you blended your wells? Instead of bringing it all out of one well, this day, all of that. So, they did that and they're having great results. We're way under the level. So, if that continues, we're doing this until July. If it's working that way, then we're going to go in to get variable speed drives to where it automatically does it versus then doing it manually. But it will save us a lot of money for trying to figure out how to take out two drops out of, two drops of water out of one water tower is what we're trying to figure out how to get out of, just so you know. So, it's hard to find that two drops of water, but.
Yep, you gotta get the right two.
Correct. Sure, relining, we got, I think, four sections done now, but we will have to pause this year due to letting the capital funds try to build back up to be able to take advantage of it next year. So, we are doing some more Cameron, but we won't be doing no lining this year. House Bill 168, they are actively doing the punch list right now. That project is nearing completion, it's probably like 98% done. But again, we want to recognize the EPA and H2O grant, Governor Dewine, anybody that helped us get the money to protect and get that project done. Choice One, can't say enough for them stepping in to help us get the grant, the application, all the way down to the contractors. But mostly, it goes back to the Village of Yellow Springs staff doing the due diligence prior to doing all the homework to be able to save us a bunch of money. I was not the one doing it, it was the water guys, the locating, the, we even have some that helped us that are no longer here. And just a big shout out to, if you had chance to work on that project, we thank you. Because the village is much better for your hard work and dedication to our staff and to our village.
So, should we draft a letter to Governor Dewine?
I think we should, yes. And tell him we need, tell him we need about another 16 million, we'll be cut up.
I mean, so I think you and Kevin could sign that letter.
Yes.
And, yeah, I think that's a great idea. Because most of the time, our letters are complaining about something.
You're absolutely correct.
Thank you, it'd be good.
Yeah, why not?
Good idea.
Lost in place, we had unit five and six remodeled. Five is now got somebody in it, six, they'll be calling the tenant tomorrow. We had six, one of them fell through, so we have to go to the next one in line. So, we are down to remodeling number one right now. And then we'll be back to having 16 strong in there and moving on. So, there are just some pictures of it. We added some parking spots in there, the mailboxes. There'll be a bike rack going out there a little bit later than the spring. So, it's shaping up out there. Springs Meadows, as you see, if you have driven, I don't know if you guys have driven back there or not, but they're, even phase two has probably 15 sold already, seven out of the ground. So, they are selling as fast as they can. So, so that's just a picture, that is actually an old picture. But I encourage you to drive back here, there's some phenomenal looking houses. And believe it or not, I think 15 of these have listed their houses in town for sale and moved to Springs Meadows. So, there's a lot of the current villagers that have moved to Springs Meadows. And they literally have their houses for sale.
You think about 15?
I think there's 15 out there. I can name about seven right now. Yeah, so. But we're also willing and looking for all the new ones because they could be, they're still our bosses and they could be the next people that are on Environmental Commission, on Planning Commission, council members, school board members. So, we are open to welcoming them all.
Absolutely.
So, again, this is another photo of the Senator.
Kyle Kayle.
Kyle, yes. They come, he was notified and he come and introduced and told us what he could do for us as well and told us to reach out if we needed to have a talk with him as well. U Center, it has only been growing. There's, she's got so many kids down there. We actually put a kitchen in there, she's feeding a lot of the kids daily. They just got back from the Cincinnati Zoo, you'll probably see that in the next manager's report. But they are also, if you look in there, Councilman Brown is showing them how to prepare cooking. So, and so, she was in there helping them one day and teaching them some things on top of people going in there to tutor. The tutoring program is ran by Green County Library. So, we want to thank them as well for helping us get a lot of tutoring done for our kids. Gaunt Park Pool will be open sooner than what we realized. I mean, it's right around the corner.
Yeah.
So, Sam is out there, we're doing some concrete repair. We are, we have partnered with Antioch to rent the pool for three days to where we can do pre-training versus waiting until we get water in ours. So, our lifeguards will be trained, we're bringing our own trainer in. But Antioch has allowed us to rent the gym for three, or rent the pool for three days to be able to be ahead of the game, so.
Do we have to approve fees?
No.
That's not an annual thing anymore?
I believe so.
No, there's, she's not increasing.
There's no change.
Okay.
Yep, it's staying the same.
So, what we see each year then would be a.
Correct, if there's a change, yes, then we would. Just another big shout out to council, to the villagers, an incredible staff, my team, the public works team, police team, dispatch, utility building, administration. I couldn't do it without them. And we as a village are great at our jobs because we have such great collaboration together. That is the year end.
Thank you, that is really good. I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, that's the village manager's report, but it's about us.
Correct, absolutely.
So, we definitely, thanks for doing that for us. Alrighty, lost my agenda. Old business.
Nope, manager's report now.
That felt like the manager's report. Yep, so still, you got.
Still me. We did, we did a go session and Elise had come up here a little bit to talk about it. So, I bypassed that one, I highlighted some stuff. First, let me, before I forget, spring cleanup is May 5th through the 9th. Brian, I'm going to apologize, I'm going to look at my phone. Sewer adjustment for your summer sewer adjustment. Forms are due by August 15th and they are for June, July and August. Credit will show up on your October bill, up to $6,000. That's for water in your gardens and your plants and things like that. So, again, the due date for the summer sewer adjustment is August 15th and is for June, July and August. Credit will appear on your October bill.
And then those forms?
You can get them online or you can get them at the utility office.
If you've done it before, you just call and they do it automatically, right?
The utility department would be glad to answer the phone and take your information.
And we're going to promote both those things on the Facebook page?
Yes.
Alright, cool.
Yes. Again, I just touched, the grapevine should be in your mail today. We, Civica Plus, that has gone away with another one's coming on. I'm going to let, I'm going to switch gears when Elise comes up. I want her to talk about Bridie and the intern. She has a lot about that. Shred It, Cameron is actively working on the day that works the best for Shred It. So, we'll get a public notice out there. Telecommunication week for like the dispatchers and people like that is this week, April 13th through the 19th. The village police will be starting their Facebook, so you'll see that coming out. So, they can get information out there quicker than we can. It's still going to be the same hosting people, but they'll have a separate page where they can get more. We did a lot of talking at public, at other managers' roundtables. And that was a common thing, that the police departments, if they have their own, can get the message out faster than any other municipal Facebook page. People tune into those faster. So, we have, let Paige know, she's raring to go. So, we will, she's going to create the content and then it will still be ran through Elise and through Ben Gunther to get the content on there and get it posted out. We have an expansion that those works will be coming back and talking to. Nook is expanding, so they're talking about building a new facility out there. So, we're all in the talks with Allison Moody on building a brand new building out there for them.
They need a new building?
They do, they're expanding.
Where are they going to put a new building?
To the north of the property. She has about five acres right there inside there. There's a little building there, it's right next to the train shuttle. The cover bridge right there.
Yep.
There's an open lot right there.
So, that's their property.
That's still Allison's property. So, she's talking about building, I think it's a 9,000 square foot building right there to be able to house them as well. They built campers, I looked at them over the weekend, I'm like, ooh, that's nice from back of my truck. But, not right now. Still like the hotel camping. Meg and Aaron will be attending a training on April 23rd on So Smart Team. So, they will be doing some more work there.
Wait, who's going to So Smart?
Meg and Aaron.
Okay, cool.
They will be going to that. On the 23rd, yes. Will Foster is. Will Foster is the president of YSDC and Meg is working with him, um, on a pretty regular basis, trying to keep up with some different things going on. Uh, McGraw-Braybender was here on the 15th and then we got our, uh, things, our insurance packets together. So Cameron is finalizing them, uh, to be able to get them turned back in and so we can get things going there. Spring cleanup, May 5th to the 9th. Uh, so let me go back, let me just now go on to, I want to get council's opinion on something. I, I, I put a memo in the, um, packet about stopping the, we need to zoom in, we need to do this. Really, the reason is, is we want to be able to be connected, being hybrid, being somewhere else. Staff really needs to be able to have communications. We would like to stop it unless it's a state of emergency or we can come back. But, uh, we want to be able, if you're, if you need to be off, be off. But we want to be able to be in the same room together. So we want to just get your opinion about coming back, changing the original resolution, uh, back to if the state says, hey, we need to be at home or we can still do that. Or if we have a problem in town, we need to do that, but not on a regular basis. So I'd like to get your guys' thoughts on it. If that is what you guys would like, we'll bring it back next time.
Well, I guess I'd like to first hear, uh, it sounded like it was a technical.
There is, there is mainly, the technical is, is with the new system. That's a small piece of it. It's really, it's, we want to be able to communicate. Being by Zoom in another state or somewhere else or, you know, want to be able to be in the same room. We want to have this one-on-one because we really, especially me, I can't present on the computer as much as my passion in the room with you. Uh, we will have to do some wiring if it's necessary, but it can be done. I can get a contractor in here and get it done. Uh, Ben's dedicated back here, he's watching the computer all the time. Mainly it is, we want to be able to communicate. We don't want to have to have that process. We got YouTube, we have, uh, Channel 5, we have Facebook that is live. If anybody wants to watch it, they have access to watch it. It's just one thing that we'd like to pause for a while.
Counsel, colleagues.
I think that's probably something for the full board or for full council.
Yeah, that's, I mean, so I think that's a good point. Um, well, as Johnny knows, I also questioned the technical financial thing because that made less sense to me. But what I do know and maybe others of us know is that basically no elected body is meeting virtually. I mean, I mean, everybody I talked to, you know, uh, is not doing that. And, um, and I think it kind of relates to, you know, why that was a restriction prior to COVID. So, uh, so yeah, I, I will say, um, as long as we're focused, focusing more on public interaction and our own deliberation, then I'm open to it. But also I agree with Trish, I'd like to hear from Gavin and Carmen and, yeah, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think that's quite appropriate. Uh, I guess from, uh, my perspective, two things. The one, when I first read it, it was like, oh, sounds like staff overreach, hold on. Then, um, I considered, you know, the technical thing and then it was like, well, if it's me that's wanting to be remote, I can't be me because I can't, I, I'm not allowed to chair, uh, the, the meeting. So it's like, it's a, it's a, it's, it sounds like a nice convenience, but I do think to Trish's point, it's important to get, you, get, get the rest of the, the full bodies' opinion on things. Um, I feel what you're saying and I think, I think, I, I, I think at the end of the day, I'm probably okay with it. And, and, yeah, I think we doing what makes sense. And yeah, the whole legal thing is just, it's just been not clear to me, you know? Everybody was in the same boat, you know, in the middle of the pandemic, then it slowly changed.
Cause my understanding is school boards can't do it. I mean, you know, as you know, Green County, you know, uh, planning.
Yep.
MVR PC, we can't do it, so, yeah.
So bringing it, if we brought it back as an ordinance, it is all council making the decision as opposed to another discussion and then legislation. I don't, I don't think it's a complex decision. It might be this many in favor and that many not in favor. It's not.
Um, to your point, Brian, I, I would be remiss in not mentioning all of this. There has been a very recent change in Ohio law allowing for remote meetings of a lot of boards.
Oh, really?
Yes, it's a, it's a new change. It's a complete change actually to went to the open meeting section of the revised code. It would not apply to you. It does not apply to boards of elected, elected officials or officials that receive compensation for their role. Um, so that would cut out, of course, you know, village councils, township trustees, um, school boards. But it could be allowed for other entities. Um, I can't really speak to the ins and outs of it right now, but if you hear rumors out there, rumblings, I would be remiss in not mentioning that the law is changing and more entities are going to be able to start meeting remotely if they so choose. You can do it now because you're a charter municipality and you've passed an ordinance and given yourselves the ability to do it, um, which is of course what we'd be looking to change.
So you're thinking like MVR PCs, for example, would, or not sure?
I, I'd have to look at the carve-outs. I'm really not sure.
Cool.
I hate to speculate.
Yep.
But in case you're.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that.
So, and, and I want to be clear, it's, it's the hybrid thing we want to stop. You know, you, because if I read it right, being all here is great. Being all gone is great.
It's a great.
That was a joke.
Let's do it more often. But the hybrid thing, you know, some of us here, some of us out is, is, is what presents a little difficulty and, and awkwardness, maybe, okay?
So legislation next time or more discussion next time?
I was going to say both.
Well, you always discuss.
Yes, yes. So yeah, let's, let's bring it back. I, I, because let's bring it back.
Bring what back?
The, the proposal. So I hear what you're, I hear what you're asking me now. Wait, are we ready to do legislation? I mean, I, I don't know how ready we are if we don't really know what everyone else thinks. I mean, I'm sort of ambivalent, so it could, it could, it could be, uh, I don't care, two yeses and two noes. So I think we have a discussion.
I think the other two would want to have a discussion or the opportunity to, but, um.
But if we brought legislation, they would still be able to discuss it before they vote.
Well, bringing legislation, I mean, does, you know, up the ante, so I don't know.
I, I also feel like there was a robust memo in here and you don't come to a meeting, you do read the packet and.
Well, I'm, I'm in the I don't care camp. I mean, in the sense that whatever you want to do.
They've got two I don't care, so.
All right, we'll figure it out in a jib of planning.
But I mean, you could always talk to Carmen and Gavin and see if they have a preference.
This is not time sensitive though, is it? I mean, we, we.
Well, I mean.
What are we doing?
Zooming in until, you know, money spent.
I don't think we did Zoom tonight.
Right. I feel you. I, 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 yeah, there's another point that I, you said it and it didn't, I didn't catch that we didn't do Zoom and. And you're right, and I think I was in a, I was in a conversation with somebody for you who was, uh, but yeah, Channel 5, Fa, uh, well, Facebook, uh, everything. There's lots of ways, uh, YouTube, that's what I wanted to say, yeah. So yeah, um, let's see it.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, see it in two weeks in some fashion, fashion or another. Okay.
Now it's all business.
All business. All right, and that's got Mrs. Giardulo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Elise Giardulo, project lead. So on Friday, April 11th, village council held a work session in rooms A and B where we reviewed and refined council goals. So prior to that session, each council member had individually submitted goals, um, with Judy, who then passed them along to me. I compiled all of those submissions and from them, six key themes emerged. So during that work session, we talked through each of those six themes, one by one, discussing all of the proposed goals within them. The purpose of that session was mainly to build consensus and, um, determine which goals to keep. So since that meeting, I've compiled the updated list of goals that council agreed to retain. That list is included in your packet for your review. So really I'm here simply just to ask for confirmation. Does the list accurately reflect the outcomes of that work session as you saw it? Did I capture everything correctly? Do we need to make any edits or tweaks?
I'm really happy with it and, you know, I clarified, you know, my one issue, which is that there were a couple requests that we got that I don't felt like, I don't feel like we really had time to talk about them, but they're captured in the concepts. And so we have time to come back to those specific requests later. So I thought you did a great job.
Hey, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I agree, Elise, I think you did do a great job, but when I was reading through here, it was, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to see where I, I felt like maybe two things sounded redundant, but I don't remember where they are. I didn't write anything down and it's probably not true that it's, I know it was, I think it was a section when we were putting dots.
Housing?
Yeah, maybe that's where it was and something sounded.
Yeah, I know that we had, yeah, we had sort of rolled because there were, I think, two that were related to Lytec. We ended up just kind of rolling them up.
In short, I mean, I didn't write anything down, so it must not have really been a, a real thing. Maybe on first read, I thought, and then I read it again and that's probably what it was. But it does look good. Uh, I feel good. With, with, with the work that's been done and, uh, and the process. And I guess next steps is the next question.
Yes.
And will you, will you have a role in helping to facilitate all of these things?
I believe so, yes, yeah, at some point. So I think next steps would be, um, and correct me if I'm wrong Judy, but the next council meeting, this would come forward as a resolution for adoption. Um, and then after that sort of implementation, um, I'd be working closely with, um, village manager on sort of assigning staff to that, coming up with timelines and sort of reporting back to council on those.
Should I have used the word facilitate or effectuate?
I like both.
Okay. Just being goofy.
All right. And another thing that Elise brought up, um, uh, when I was here the other day was, you know, we've had that, uh, table that's talked about like, you know, steps, who's, you know, responsible, that sort of thing. So I think that's what I'm hearing Elise talk about. And so I guess I just want to emphasize that, uh, you know, council members are assets as well. And we all have different, different amounts of time, but, um, I think some of these goals, uh, you know, plugging us in makes sense.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
Indeed, indeed.
Great.
All right, good point. Anything else for Mrs. Giardulo while she's there?
Thank you very much.
You slipped that time.
Thanks, Elise. It's easier.
That's for the record, that's what she told me.
Have you guys never been to an Italian restaurant?
We, we. Spaghetti's done the same way.
All right, excellent. Thanks again, Elise, for all that. Alrighty, we're going to buzz through new business. This is our second meeting of the month. Um, it is, so, um, are there any boards and commission highlights that anyone needs to bring forward? I don't either.
I mean, I think mine was in my memo. And, uh, you know, tons of stuff happening with the environmental commission. But yeah, I mean, I'll just say again, if anyone wants to come out on, uh, Tuesday at 11:00 to plant monarch butterfly plants, uh, at Bill Duncan, you're welcome.
Duly noted, duly noted. So I guess the library commission, Johnny, I think that should be a offline conversation. I mean, there's been, I think even Judy always asks, why is there a commission? And so, um, well, the answer to the question, why is because we pay. Well, we, there's some ordinance or whatever established it, something established it and, and we, if we don't think.
Well, we can put them on hiatus. We've done that with many commissions if, uh, you know.
Yeah, I think there's a, a lot of offline conversation going to happen, be had about.
Yep, yep.
But I think ultimately it could be a staff thing, you know, like I, I don't know that it needs to be a commission to counsel.
In, in fact, the case, we have to, we have to undo, is it an ordinance?
You don't have to undo anything as per incident. You can just put it on hiatus, but you probably want the whole council here when you talk about that.
Yep. Oh, well, good, not, not a problem. I'm good with that. Yeah, and I'm, I'm good either way. And yeah, and to, sort of like, it sounded like an internal conversation happening here, but there's, there's some, it's not time for hiatus. There's some ongoing stuff. And ultimately it may end up, end up that, but, uh, it's sort of a, a weird situation, so we'll, we'll have to work through it. Yeah, okay. All right. That was boards and commissions. Don't think we need an executive session for anything. Future agenda items, uh, we are bringing back a discussion we just talked about a few minutes ago as, at least as a, I don't really care, discussion or res, or, uh, legislation. Did anything else come up during the meeting that, that I'm not thinking about?
Not that I caught you, a whopping list of one for the fifth, so.
Yep, well, that, that's a, that's, that's enough. That's way much. Gotcha. The council process for projects, is that a general thing or was, was Gavin driving that?
Gavin's.
Okay. Alrighty, um, we are through the future agenda items, uh, for the most part. I don't think there's anything outstanding. Is there anything else for the good of the order? The chair will entertain a motion and second to adjourn.
Got it.
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned by acclamation, all right?
Thank you.
Happy day after Easter.
Yes.